Good leadership for the city mayor and council members, and we pray for them and all the leaders and first responders in our city. We pray that we might make wise decisions, lead us all in ways that demonstrate your love and grace toward one another and making good decisions each new day for every challenge. And we're thankful that you love us enough to provide all that we need in Jesus' name. Guide this meeting. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Staley. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2024.
Do we have approval of the minutes? Were any corrections?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open.
It's frozen.
We will do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
We have awards and proclamations. The proclamations today are Project Access 25th Anniversary, Provider Appreciation Day, and Bike Month.
May please ask Councilmember Johnston to join me at the front.
May also ask Project Access members to please join us at the front. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Project Access provides an effective way to serve low-income individuals who have no health insurance through a streamlined process built on the generosity of our medical community, which donates all care and treatment to Project Access clients. And whereas Project Access has a network that includes eight hospitals, 640 physicians, 14 dentists, and many other medical professionals who yearly donate millions of dollars in medical treatment to those in need. Project Access partners with local community health clinics, including Guadalupe Clinic, Grace Med, Hunter Health, Mayflower Clinic, and Health Core Clinic. And whereas Project Access provides needed medication and durable med-" The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas T L A D Learning Academy and other organizations nationwide are recognizing licensed childcare providers on May 10th, 2024. And whereas childcare provides a safe nurturing place for the enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide and is a vital force in our economy. And whereas childcare providers are indispensable and are for the well-being and economic security of Kansas's young children, families, and communities. And whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2024 as Provider Appreciation Day in the City of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recognize the efforts of licensed childcare providers and continue with the supportive commitment to our children's future."
I'm Teri Berger, owner of T Lab Learning Academy. On behalf of all family, childcare providers, centers across the United States, we thank you for acknowledging what we do day in and day out, even through crisis. Thank you.
May please ask Councilmember Becky Tuttle to come down to the front. I will also like to ask the Health and Wellness Coalition to come forward. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita is teaming up with the city and community partners to recognize National Bike Month in our community. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of many Americans and is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users in efforts to reduce accidents and injuries. And whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health and well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and reduction of pollution and congestion. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Month ICT in the City of Wichita and encourage all residents, businesses, and independent cyclists throughout our community to support the implementation of the Wichita Bicycle Master Plan."
Thank you, Mayor Wu, and members of the City Council. My name is Shelley Rich, and I'm with the Health and Wellness Coalition. And I just want to encourage all of you, if you're looking for motivation to pull your bicycle out of the garage, visit BikeMonthICT.org for a full list of events. Next week is Bike to Work Week, so I challenge you to commute to work by bike, and you could win the Golden Pedal Award. And then finally, new this year, when you visit our website, register for the Bike Month raffle. This is your chance to win a new hybrid bicycle, thanks to a collaboration between the City of Wichita, Air Quality Funds, Be Aware Program, Legacy Bank, and Heartland Bicycle. Thank you, and enjoy your rides this month.
I would like to now ask WSU Tech to come forward for the WSU Tech Signing Day video and presentation with Dr. Sherry Utash.
Today is National Signing Day here at WSU Tech.
Kennedy, why don't you tell them what we're doing?
We're giving away a $1,000 scholarship.
You just come, sign, get a picture with the big check over there, and have a great time.
Are you kidding me? $1,000?
I'm here for the $1,000.
Hi, my name is Lauren, and I go to Andover Central High School.
My name is Blanca, and I'm from South High.
Carter, and I go to school at Bishop Carroll.
And I go to Southeast High School.
Freedom Preparatory.
Derby High School.
Manhattan High School.
And I go to Neotishia High School.
After I graduate high school, I'm going to WC Tech.
I plan to attend WC Tech for interior design.
Aviation mechanics.
Information technology.
Registered nurse.
WSU Tech's automotive program.
Signing Day is important to get the students really excited and explain the opportunities they have ahead of them.
In our industry, there is a huge demand for new talent coming in.
It's important to link in electric to be part of National Signing Day because we get to see the future of our industry.
Today is all about honoring these students' choice to pursue a career in technical education. So whether that's automotive, IT, culinary, manufacturing, today is the day where we are celebrating those students and we are setting them up for success.
To get $1,000 feels amazing.
Less money I have to pay for school.
$1,000 to me means hope.
One step closer to completing my education debt-free.
If I could describe today in one word, it would be amazing.
Fantastic.
Thankful.
Blessed.
Joy.
Awesome.
Amazing.
I love today.
I got a $1,000 scholarship.
Here for the money, baby.
Show me the money.
I just got $1,000.
Not bad for a hard day's work.
That was fun. Can we do it again? I mean, I want $1,000 again. Please, let's do this again.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this morning and to share this. About seven or eight years ago, the dean at Washburn Tech and I were having a happy hour at a conference we were at. And we were talking about how do you celebrate career technical education and the decisions that students are making. So we decided to do something very similar to what college athletes get when they make those decisions to play sports at different institutions. And I went back to the days of my youngest daughter when she signed to play volleyball right out of high school. And so we started this seven or eight years ago. Happy to say that this year's Signing Day for us, we had almost 200 high school students commit and received that scholarship of $1,000. I'm more excited to share, though, that this idea that started here in Topeka, Kansas, and Wichita, Kansas, has now spanned across the United States, and there was over 200 institutions across the United States celebrating National Signing Day and really celebrating the decisions that young people are making when they make that decision to begin their careers with a career in technical education pathway. So super exciting times. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, five years ago, we had 58 that came. This year, we had almost 200. So we're continuing to enroll those. The other good thing is, out of those 200, 101 enrolled on the spot of new WSU Tech students for next year. So here's what happens. They get a, they commit, they sign a letter of intent, just like you do, they get a ball cap, they get a $1,000 scholarship, they get pictures with their families, they get, you know, they bring all their families. It's a really great day of celebration. So we're super excited about how this continues to grow Signing Day here in Wichita, but also across the nation as we provide this most critical talent workforce that's needed across our United States. So thank you.
Thank you again to Dr. Sherry Utash and the team at WSU Tech for celebrating, again, career and technical college and education for our young kiddos. We really appreciate that that segment of our city council meeting is about awards. And so congratulations to the 200 high school students who received a $1,000 scholarship, and congratulations on graduating this year in 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public agenda, Gracie Lamb, ceasefire in Israel and Palestine.
Good morning, Council. My name's Gracie Lamb. I'm a student at Wichita State University studying political science. In addition to my studies, I am also on the Student Senate, and recently, the Wichita State Student Government passed my resolution advocating for a ceasefire. I want to preface this by saying that this is not a political issue with a side to take. It's a people issue. Major non-governmental organizations such as Human Rights Watch and UN Human Rights Council and Amnesty International have called out the Israel-Palestine conflict as violating international law and resulting in crimes against humanity and human rights violation. Also, global diplomats have not come to a consensus that there's a genocide occurring in Gaza. Amnesty International's General Secretary, Agnes Calamard, said that the threshold for genocide is met, and that holds a lot of weight. If you took a lot of interest in your history classes, you know the significance and importance of taking human rights organizations seriously. The reason I'm here in front of the City Council today is because the United States is sending money and lethal weapons to Israel, continuing the war. The reason we at Wichita State passed the ceasefire in Gaza resolution was to use our platform as a large public institution to advocate for peace and to pressure larger governments like this one to pass something similar. The city of Wichita is the largest city with a libertarian mayor, which is a source of pride for many of us. So I'm sure you all understand the philosophy of libertarians that advocates against the US entering itself into foreign conflicts, especially giving American DAX dollars to foreign military powers. Council, the amount we spend in Israel is no small amount. We spend over $3 billion a year, estimated to be somewhere between 3.1 billion and 3.8 billion, which is more than we spend at our own border. And we recently passed a bill to give them $26 billion. This makes us an accessory to major international law violations as Israel continues to use their power to slaughter Palestinians. Seventy percent of those who are already dead are women and children. Mayor Wu, I saw in the news that you recently visited Switzerland to learn about the Swiss ideas and how to implement them in a city government. The Swiss are most famous for their philosophy on peace. The Swiss began their strive to keep the peace in the 11th century after losing a couple wars of expansion, which resulted in unnecessary deaths. I believe that we, as the United States, should advocate for peace as well, especially within city governments. There is absolutely no reason for this many deaths to occur. We have been to a few city council meetings already and received quite a bit of support. And we are hoping to enact a city ordinance similar to the one that passed in the student government at Wichita State, basically saying that the city of Wichita does not support sending money to war or support international human rights violations, such as violations of the Geneva Convention, the Hague Convention, and the Human Rights Declaration, which was proposed by the United States itself. The technicalities of this ordinance, I know you guys are very busy, so that would be something that we would need to write ourselves. I am familiar with how to write a bill. I spent quite a bit of time in Topeka this last semester. I could set up a meeting with any one of you if you'd be interested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gracie, for speaking out this morning. I will just add one additional item. I really appreciate your reference to peacemaking. I did understand the concept and know that here in Wichita, we are peacemakers. And just last week during the National Day of Prayer, we talked about the importance of being peacemakers in our own community. So again, thank you for speaking out as a college student. Are there, is there any additional time or other public comment? Oh, Johnson, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Gracie, thank you for using your voice and the work that you did with SGA to get that resolution passed, and thank you for standing on the right side of the issue, caring about people and life and this needless war and the needless death of so many people over there. I just wanted to thank you for your work.
We will end public agenda items now, and Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items, one through 15. Are there any items to be pulled? We see none? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor Ballard seconded. Any additional comments? We see none. Madam Clerk, please open it up.
If you want to do it by voice, that would be best because it keeps freezing on that.
Okay. Again, we apologize for the technical difficulties. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 6th, 2024.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Laubert, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened May 6th, 2024 with the following recommendations. For engineering, we have the MacArthur Waterline Extension between Meridian and West Street Phase 1 for Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $195,269. For purchasing, we have the replacement of various valves for Utility Maintenance Contractors, LLC in the amount of $207,200. We have the manholes inlet covers, inlet frames, excuse me, and covers for DC and B Supply Incorporated in the amount of $136,802.57. We have the background check investigations for TrueView BSILLC for the rates listed, with one year, with three one-year options to renew. We have the parts for rotating assembly for Patterson Pump Company in the amount of $75,358. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions for staff? I see none? Open it up for any public comment? I see none? Bring it back to the bench. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that the City Council receive and file, receive and file report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. This morning, I have three locations for petitions for your consideration. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement districts, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. First one before you is Sweeney Farm Edition, located in District 3. The project will provide water improvements, stormwater drain improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, and paving improvements for new residential development. The second item is South Seneca Estates, District 4. Projects will provide water improvements, stormwater drain improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, and paving improvements. And the last item is Cypress Glen Second Edition in District 5. The projects will provide water, sewer, and paving improvements required for new residential development. The developer will also construct improvements under private contract and to comply with state statute regarding the use of special assessment funding, the city must acquire the completed projects. It is recommended that the City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none? Any public comments? I see none? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Amendment to the real estate agreement for the sale of 2220 East 21st Street North.
Good morning, City Council. Jerry Ford with Development Services. This item I bring before you today is an amendment to a real estate agreement that was previously approved on April 9th. The real estate agreement for 2220 East 21st Street was approved on April 9th for a sale to Habitat for Humanity. After the approval of the agreement, it was discovered that a portion of Section 13, which was in references future use, and the introductory portion of Section 14 in notices, was inadvertently dropped from the agreement. Section 14, Future Use, states that the buyer commits to the ownership of, the management of, and the maintenance of a property as the Habitat Headquarters for a minimum of two years. That part missing from the April 9th agreement is a paragraph that states that the buyer will not be bound to be required to enforce the terms of the section if the buyer is no longer in ownership of the property. However, both parties do agree to the deed restrictions that are set forth in Section 12. Section 14 is about notices and is missing the introduction to the section, which is in essence information about how the parties agree to inform each other. On April 23rd, the amendment to include these missing sections of the original agreement were presented to City Council on the consent agenda. It was at that time that City Council requested additional language be added to the use provision of Section 13 detailing how the property could be repurchased in the event of a nonuse. The item was deferred to today, May 7th. If Habitat were to violate the two-year occupancy and use guarantee, the buyer has, they have agreed to additional language in this amendment before you today that empowers the city an option to repurchase the property at the original sale price or at a lesser amount should Habitat agree to a sale price for less than what they paid. Habitat subsequently requested an extension of their due diligence period, which extends the due diligence period from June 8th to June 20th. There are no financial considerations or no impact as a result of the proposed changes, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the amendment to the real estate agreement dated April 9th and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none? We'll open it up for public comment.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Lori Walker. I'm the Program Director at Wichita Habitat for Humanity. I want to first tell you that we're grateful to the City Council for voting to approve Wichita Habitat's purchase of the building at, on 21st Street at your April 9th meeting. And before addressing the specifics of the agenda item before you, I want to speak to the commitment we've demonstrated to the community where we plan to move our headquarters. Wichita Habitat has been working in the area since 2014. It is referred to, and you might have heard the name, Rock the Block Neighborhood. We see the purchase of this building and moving our operations as a way to solidify our commitment to this once very neglected part of our community. This move will impact 22 staff members, making it a major undertaking for our entire team, something we do not plan to do again for many years to come. While we enjoy tax-exempt status, our endeavors significantly contribute to the growth of the tax base, and I would ask you to consider these figures. Since 2014- the tax base, and I would ask you to consider these figures. Since 2014, we've constructed a hundred and sixteen new homes, most of which are in an area that was mostly infill lots. In the Rock the Block Neighborhood, we've completed thirteen renovations, enabling one hundred and twenty-nine families to achieve homeownership. These homes are homes to three hundred and seventeen children and one hundred and ninety-six adults. The homeowners have collectively contributed six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in property taxes since they've purchased their homes. By transforming vacant, blacked lots into vibrant residential spaces, we generate far more revenue than would otherwise be possible, thereby alleviating burden for taxpayers. Furthermore, homeowners of properties built or rehabilitated by Wichita Habitat for Humanity contribute over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to the property tax rolls. We also have completed repairs on seventeen homes for homebuyers or homeowners who would not otherwise be able to take care of those issues on their homes due to limited income. We've invested a little over fifteen million dollars in this neighborhood since we started working there. It has taken us many years of hard work to earn the trust of the Rock the Block Neighborhood. We would not do anything to jeopardize that for any reason whatsoever. In short, our commitment to Wichita extends beyond mere housing construction. We actively seek to revitalize communities and stimulate economic growth. Our plan to consolidate our program office and construction and now home repair operations has been under discussion for more than eight years. It is included in our strategic plan, and our hope was to get that done by the end of this year. This building will make that possible, and we're thrilled to have the opportunity. After confirming that the property would meet our needs, we did a lot of due diligence to make sure that we would be able to use this property for many years to come. Our offer of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars is based on the 2023 valuation or county appraisal at the time the proposal was written, which was nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred dollars. The offer took into consideration our plan to invest three hundred thousand in renovating the building so it would meet our needs for the long term. We did not ask to lease the building with an option to purchase at some point in the future, but tendered a cash offer to buy it outright. We do not need to do a capital campaign to raise the funds to purchase this building because Wichita Habitat for Humanity was blessed alongside eighty-four other Habitat affiliates, that's of the fifteen-hundred affiliates in the United States, with funds, unrestricted dollars, from Mackenzie Scott. The RFP stated specifically that the successful bidder must remain in the building for two years. We acknowledged that requirement in our proposal, and Section thirteen of the agreement, which we've all signed, addresses that commitment. That said, Wichita Habitat for Humanity has, in good faith, agreed to the addition of language, giving the city the option to purchase the building back at the lesser of the purchase price or any amount we might be offered for the property if we fail to own, manage, and maintain the property for two years. This is in spite of the fact that we're going to invest three hundred thousand dollars in that building. When we choose a space to invest in, you can see and feel the difference. No different than the communities we've identified to invest in, this headquarters will serve that same purpose. Thank you for your time.
Any additional public comments? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Habitat for Humanity. I appreciate your patience and the process of contracts and things. I think we've got it right now. I wish you all the best. Do absolutely great work and look forward to many more years of helping people. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Yeah, I want to echo Councilman Johnston's comments. I think this is a strengthened agreement. Thank you for being flexible in this process. Often, sometimes government isn't the easiest to work with, but I'm thankful for you doing this, and I think this is a precedent moving forward that we're going to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and also encourage your investment as well. So thank you for investing in the community. I'm glad that you mentioned, again, the statistic about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars invested back in the tax rules, and that's a huge benefit that Habitat has, that a lot of nonprofits in the community don't invest back on the tax rules in terms of that. So thank you for that work, and I'm very excited to support this as presented today.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, I'm sorry. I have one quick question for you. Is the new language something that we have ever added in contracts before, or was this just an oversight that we forgot to put on there?
No, that language is typical language that we would put in real estate contracts.
Okay, there were just some conversations on social media saying that this was maybe unusual, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
No, the sections that we're missing are standard language for the city to have in its contracts. They're real estate contracts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there no further comments? Is there a motion to approve?
With a motion to approve the amendment to the real estate agreement as presented by staff.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign, and one abstention. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public Hearing and Tax Exemption Request, Lee Aerospace.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpast here with the City Manager's Office of Development Services. The item before you today is a request for a tax exemption for Lee Aerospace. Lee Aerospace was founded in nineteen eighty-nine. It designs and manufactures aircraft windows, aerostructure assemblies, and composite parts for the aerospace industry. It is proposing that it would renovate a building at ninety-four thirteen East Thirty-Fourth Street North, which is just west of Thirty-Fourth Street and Webb Road. The renovation will create a clean room, a layup room, and a sputter chamber, which will be utilized to apply thin layers of material to aircraft windows. The company will be investing a million dollars in real property improvements and an additional one million dollars in new machinery and equipment for a total investment of two million dollars. The company currently employs a hundred and fifty-four employees in Wichita and projects as a result of this project that it will add fifteen new employees over five years with wages in excess of fifty-four thousand dollars. The project qualifies for a ninety percent tax abatement under the current economic development guidelines. Based on capital investment, it qualifies for forty percent. Based on job creation, an additional thirty percent. Being in a regional growth plan sector, which is advanced manufacturing, an additional ten percent. And by utilizing State of Kansas incentives, it qualifies for an additional ten percent. No land will be abated as part of this project. The economic development exemption under which this company qualifies for a property tax abatement is a State of Kansas program that is not utilized very often because it's very limited in the types of companies that can utilize it. For a company to qualify, they have to be in one industry, one of three industry sectors in the State of Kansas, that being manufacturing, warehousing and distribution, or research and development, all with products utilized in interstate commerce. There will be no sales tax exemption as part of the EDX program. The estimated value of a ninety percent abatement of the one million dollar investment is approximately twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, with the city's share being approximately seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. There will be a payment in lieu of taxes put in place for this project because this is an existing building that is generating taxes. So the existing taxes today, again, that's sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, will remain in place for the ten years of the property tax abatement. So all taxing jurisdictions will continue to receive what they are getting today. The abatement will be only on any increased value based on the investment that the company is making. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs of two-point-seven-three-to-one for the city, with the city's general fund at two-point-five-five-to-one and the city's debt service fund at three-point-one-three-to-one. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing and place on first reading the ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents for the economic development exemption for Lee Aerospace Incorporated and authorize the necessary signatures. Michael Alberti, who is a vice president and general manager for Lee Aerospace, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions for staff. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for the presentation. I always say by the time something gets here to the bench, you put in a lot of time and effort, so I always appreciate that. Could you go back to slide thirty-eight, please? I think I ask this every time, but just for those who may be watching, or I don't know if anybody's watching, or if they go back and watch it later, anyone in the audience, can you please explain what this slide means and then also the significance of the two-point-seven-three-to-one?
Absolutely. So whenever there's a tax abatement completed in the State of Kansas, the state requires a cost-benefit analysis to be completed to show the impact to all taxing jurisdictions. The state does not require that there be any specific ratio of what that looks like, one-to-one, one-point-three-to-one, which the city used to have as a ratio. It could be below one. The state doesn't require there to be any specific ratio. It just requires that you run an analysis. And the City of Wichita has, as part of its economic development guidelines, a requirement that the project is at least a one-to-one ratio. So when we're looking at something that is a two-point-seven-three-to-one, we're well above the one-to-one ratio, and that is a very high return on investment for the city. For every dollar that is invested in the tax abatement, we are receiving back two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Great, great, great for the city. Also, is there any risk to the city with this, Tim?
There's absolutely no risk. There's no taxpayer dollars. Again, we're protecting the existing taxes that are being generated. We're only abating any increase in value based on the investment that the company is making.
Thank you very much.
Further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench at this moment. Any further questions? I see none. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to just make a quick-
District number two.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff again for all your hard work in this. I also want to thank Lee Aerospace for investing in our community. One of the pillars of our mission is to grow our economy and initiatives just like that, or how that's going to happen. Excited about the fifteen new jobs that it's also going to bring and a really nice wage. So thank you to everyone who's been involved, but a special thank you to Lee Aerospace. So with that, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing and place on first reading the board, the bond ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents for the economic development expansion of Lee Aerospace Incorporated and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Request for Letter of Intent to Issue Industrial Revenue Bonds to Twelve North Market.
Again, Mayor and Councilmembers, Tim Goodpast here with City Manager's Office of Development Services. The next item before you is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Two Twelve North Market. Two Twelve North Market Street LLC is a real estate holding entity that was created recently to acquire the building at Two Twelve North Market in downtown Wichita, near First Street North and Market, to develop into an affordable housing project. It is requesting a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-one million dollars. The company is requesting a sales tax exemption with an estimated value of five hundred and forty thousand dollars, the city's share of which is approximately forty-two thousand, and is requesting a tax abatement only on any increase in value over the current valuation of the property. Like the last project, a payment in lieu of taxes will be put in place equal to twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, which are the current taxes that are being paid. So no taxing jurisdiction will be out any dollars that it is currently receiving. It will only be an abatement on any increase in value based on the investment that developers are making. Two Twelve North Market is currently utilized as an office building, and it will be redeveloped into fifty-one one-bedroom and twenty-three two-bedroom units. The estimated value of a one-hundred percent abatement is approximately six hundred and forty thousand if the appraiser were to increase the value by twenty-one million dollars, the city's share of which is approximately a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Again, a payment in lieu of taxes would be put in place in excess of twenty-one thousand dollars, which are what the current property taxes are being generated. A cost-benefit analysis was completed by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which shows an overall ratio of benefits to costs of one-point-six-nine-to-one. The city's general fund ratio of benefits to costs of one-point-six-five-to-one and the city's debt service fund of one-point-eight-zero-to-one. The company is applying for tax credits through the State of Kansas, through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. The deadline is May the tenth. This project, with an approved sales tax, will help the project receive extra points in scoring in terms of trying to get more projects in Wichita that are affordable housing projects. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. The developer is based in Denver, Colorado, and given our technological issues, was not able to join us today, otherwise would have been available. So I will be happy to try to answer any questions I can.
Questions for staff, beginning with Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, great job. I've been really excited about this project, so I just have some questions for you, just to explain parts of the project to the public. The developer told me, he was telling me that sixteen percent of the units would be reserved affordable for people making thirty percent of the AMI, and an additional thirty percent will be reserved for people making less than forty percent of AMI. Can you explain what that means?
So the area median income is what a lot of the affordable housing projects are based on. The developer can set what percentage of the area median income that they want to target for their project. Obviously, the lower the area median income that they're targeting, the more beneficial it is from a scoring standpoint with the State of Kansas. If you're targeting people who have very low income, that's a good thing because there aren't a lot of projects that do that. And so with this developer, where they're targeting, I believe it's thirty, forty, and sixty percent, the tiers in terms of what they're looking at at area median income. The area median income for households in 2022, I believe, was sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. So if you're looking at the maximum income that they're looking at leasing to families, they're making is sixty percent of the area median income. So that's less than forty thousand dollars a year that they're looking at for families that would qualify to rent in this facility.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that. They also mentioned that all the units would be offered below defined fair market value, which is below the affordability threshold for people making the sixty percent. So do you have any idea what potentially these rates could be?
Unfortunately, off the top of my head, I do not have that information.
I know affordability means different things to different people, but this project seems to be actually affordable for a population that a lot of people are still not addressing the housing issue for. So I'm really excited about that. Another question is, how can we be certain or what is put in place to make sure that they stay these rates that they're telling us and the public?
So when a project utilizes low-income housing tax credits through Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, there are all kinds of regulations they have to follow, and there are all kinds of audits that the developer will have to make sure that the developer is qualifying the individuals or families that are renting in their facility by paycheck, by whatever means it is to verify what their income is. The Kansas Housing Resource Corporation is constantly auditing those companies, and they have to provide all kinds of information in terms of reporting back to the state to show that they are qualifying all of the tenants. The affordability is in place for a minimum of fifteen years, and it is a complicated deal structure in terms of the tax credit purchaser that's involved and winds up having to be in the deal for fifteen years, as well as other parties that are involved. So it's a very complicated transaction that has a lot of oversight, and so it is not undertaken lightly to pursue low- lightly to pursue low-income housing tax credits.
So there's multiple layers of people doing checks and balances?
Correct.
Okay, last question is, and I'm sorry, I don't know all the ins and outs of this. I know that Lytech paperwork is due on the 10th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what happens if they don't get the-
So if they, so we have multiple developers that are submitting by the May 10th date. There's two levels of tax credits, 4% and 9%. The 9% credits are only reviewed once a year, so this May 10th deadline is the only deadline this year. So if they don't get an application in by May 10th, obviously, they don't get the credits. There's not a second time to make an application. Now, if they get their application in by May the 10th, that does not guarantee that they are getting tax credits. These tax credits are highly competitive. The 9% tax credits, we're actually going to be reviewing this on a later item, the 9% tax credits normally generate about 70% of the equity in a project. Today, the state of Kansas is matching the 9% credits, so that's providing about 85% of the equity in a project. So as you can understand, if you're able to get 85% of your project funded through tax credits, you really want to do that. And so this is a super, super competitive situation. So they could apply and still not receive the credits, because again, this whole scoring situation they're looking at, there's people all around the state that are doing everything they can to get as many points on their application, so that Garden City, or Hayes, or Emporia, or Kansas City, or Overland Park, that they can get their projects approved. So everyone is trying to get as many points as they can to get their projects in by this May 10th deadline.
But if they don't, if they're not chosen?
They can wait, and they can reapply next year. So the state of Kansas opened up the 9% tax credits scenario in January, where companies could come in and present their project, and the state could say, well, you can do these extra things to try to get extra points. And so developers have been working to do those things, to get the extra points, to try to get the best score they can possibly get. So if they apply and are not chosen through this particular 9% consideration, which they'll find out in July whether they were selected, then if the seller of the property is willing to wait with them until next year, they could reapply next year.
Vice Mayor, I think the short answer to your question is that the developers indicated they can't go forward without the credits.
Okay, great. Thank you both very much, really appreciate it. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Ballard's question sparked two more questions than mine. First off, we had talked about if they aren't awarded this year, they have to reapply subsequent years. Our passage of this today and the passage of the IRB, how long is that, how long does that last? Does that come before council again?
So it would have to, if they did not get approved this year, then they would have to come back next year and ask for another IRB approval for next year.
Okay, fantastic, thank you for that. Second to that, and I don't project this to be a problem, this is just more for future projects too, so they guarantee that certain percentage of apartments will be, or the apartments will be based on the AMI for that family. For some reason, let's say they can't find an applicant that fits that definition, that's applying for an apartment there, what happens?
They can't lease that unit.
So just staying-
They have to have people that meet these income guidelines. It is a very strict deal that the state monitors on a regular basis, so they absolutely have to find tenants that fit that economic model.
So there's not a timeline of, hey, we have to wait six months, and then we're able to open it, they just can't rent that apartment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then this would be, I mean, a question, so I know item five, we're talking about further ways that we can enhance our ability for these credits here in Wichita moving forward. Would this retroactively be able to happen? Would they have to come back to, so let's say item five passes today, would they have to come back as part of our ability to abate further tax credits? Or what would happen with item five today?
So item five is a separate, but very important component of this same situation, this same application. What item five is going to address in terms of the waiver of fees is they get five or even 10 points, depending upon the dollar amount of the fees that are waived. And so again, just like this, getting a sales tax exemption gets them certain points in their application. The waiver of fees gets them additional points. So it's all based on this whole point schedule, where the more benefits we can offer as a community, the more points they get, the better chance we have of getting an affordable housing project in Wichita.
So let's say we already passed this today, and then we were past item five, their application is due on the 10th, so we wouldn't have another chance to come back before this body to be able to do the fee waiver?
Councilmember, if I could address that, all of this fall, as I understand it, falls in one category, and I'd like Troy Anderson to maybe talk, give you a little preview of the next item, because this project, as we're recommending it, would probably not receive the waivers, because they'll get full credit for the sales tax and property tax abatement. But I'd like Troy to address that.
Okay, thank you.
So, Councilmember, to City Manager's point, yes, this category, you can get up to 20 points, right? So as Tim was referring to, the fee waiver later on, depending on how large the project is, the size, scale, scope of the project, you might see $40,000 in permit fees waived, that might get you five points. So for this particular project, from what we understand, if an applicant gets a sales tax exemption, that's worth 10 points. If you get the property tax abatement, that's worth 10 points, so you will have maximized your 20 points anyway. So the fee waiver doesn't necessarily improve your score any, right? So, but on the other projects, right, that are submitting, where they're not applying for a property tax abatement, so for example, a couple weeks ago, you all heard a request for two projects for sales tax exemption only, right? So they might get the 10 points for the sales tax exemption, and then they might get the five or the 10 points for the fee waiver project, again, maximum of 20 points, but there's various ways you can get to that 20 points.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're capitalizing on everything moving forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hoise.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. Lot of good things here, I'm psyched that we actually get some affordable housing downtown. A couple of quick questions. What are, what's the boundary of the area median income?
So the area median income that I was referring to is Sedgwick County.
Okay, appreciate it. And then, so would future rent increases be dependent on increases in the area of median income?
They could, it'll look at the income, the rents, rather, would remain stable. If the income increases, then obviously that changes what the percentage, when you look at the percentage, when you apply the percentage to an individual or a family, what their income could be to qualify under the affordable housing guidelines.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Tim, again. Great job, always appreciate all your efforts. I won't have you go back to the slide, but just wanted to highlight that the return in investment was 1 to 1.69, so a great investment for the, a great partnership with the city. Is there any risk to the city in this initiative?
There is no risk at all, no taxpayer dollars are involved in this.
Thank you.
Tim, one last question.
Yep.
Sorry.
Nope.
Wanted to know, how many have applied for 9% Lytech?
So I believe from, in terms of projects that are in the city of Wichita, I want to say that we're aware that there are maybe six projects that are applying for the 9% credits. And a community can only receive four maximum, if we were lucky enough to receive four.
And traditionally, historically, how many have we received?
So over the last seven years, and I'm going to get to this with our next presentation, but off the top of my head, I want to say over the last seven years in the state of Kansas, there have been 85 projects that have applied for 9% credits, and I believe there's been only seven in Wichita.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you very much, Tim, appreciate it. I think this is very good. Anytime we can get affordable housing, especially in downtown, is tremendous. Also, we've got several hundred, we will have several hundred medical students in downtown, and traditionally, medical students don't have a lot of money, so that's a great option for them. Actually, I had a son that utilized this in another building, he's in med school here, so.
Nice.
It's a great thing.
Thank you, Tim. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment.
Good morning, my name's Twyla Purity. I live in the Polo Club, I'm on District Advisory Board One, and I just have a few questions on this project. Now, I understand the developer is from out of state, is that right? Okay, and then the developer will also be leasing the units, is that right? Okay, and then I know the city, or I've kind of heard that the city has had problems with out-of-state landlords, and they become slum lords. I mean, that's going pretty far, right? All the way to slum lord, but what are the protections if historically, the city has had problems with out-of-state landlords? How is this project going to be protected from what could happen in the future if they really don't maintain the building, which would be hard to maintain a good building, and get a nice return on investment if the rents are relatively low? And I guess the follow-up to that would be, has this developer done similar projects? And has the community, or are those communities happy with how the landlord is acting towards their tenants?
You still have five minutes, so we'll wait until you're done with five.
Oh, I'm done, I just was looking for answers.
We'll ask that, try. They'll respond. Any other public comment? I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. Tim, could you please come forward? Can you address whether there will be a Wichita manager managing this specific property?
They will have a management company selected locally. They have not selected one yet, but they will have a local management company. There are apartment complexes all throughout the city that are owned by developers that are out of town. It happens all the time. In particular, when you look at low-income housing tax credit projects, because of the complication of them, when companies get involved in them and they become experts in that area, they will typically do them in their region or throughout the country, because they learn how the process works, and they learn what the reporting requirements are, and they usually do a really good job of maintaining their properties, because they're very involved in these kinds of projects. And so we don't typically see that low-income housing tax credit projects, whether it's a local developer or someone from out of state, are operating in a capacity where they let the properties run down. And oftentimes, we actually see them come back, and maybe we have a project, Brentwood Apartments, near Harriet Wood Lawn, where the developer, who's owned the project since the 80s, has come back and is applying again for a round of tax credits to rehab their project. So they often come back and try to do what they can to continue to maintain the affordability as well as the maintenance of the property.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, Tim, just excited about this project. We always say that downtown is everyone's backyard, and now there's more opportunity for people to afford to live in that backyard, so I am happy to see this project, and I'm hoping that we can see even more affordable units downtown. Just grateful that the applicant is looking to do this work.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and Tim, just if we could invite you back up, we're going to make you jump up and down a lot today. Regarding the community member, thank you for coming today, we always appreciate community engagement and glad that you're interested and care, so thank you for being here and asking a question. I just want to kind of reemphasize too, because of the potential for the low-income housing tax credits, the state will be involved?
Correct.
And so there will be additional oversight, monitoring of this project to ensure the living, livable conditions for the tenants, et cetera, would that be a good assumption to make?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you kind of mentioned it, but there's been precedent for us doing this before, correct?
Absolutely.
And we, have we had any concerns with out-of-state purchasers in the past?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions. This resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said, I am very excited about this project. They will be having a local management company just a few blocks away from the property, so that's really good news, because as Ms. Purity mentioned, we have heard in the past, sometimes out-of-state developers that aren't here to drive by every day don't take as good of care of our properties. So really excited to hear about that, and just excited for someone to actually tackle the affordability piece that so many members in our community are really struggling to find housing. So very excited about this, and with that, I would like to, I move to take the recommended action to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing on proposed assessments for 37 paving projects, 30 water projects, 24 sewer projects, and 21 storm sewer projects in September 2024 bond sale series 834.
Good morning, again, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities for the record. The item before you this morning is a public hearing on proposed assessments for 112 projects. There are 37 paving projects, 30 water projects, 24 sanitary sewer projects, and 21 storm sewer projects for a total of $33,642,202. Notice of hearing letters were published March 1st, 2024, for all 112 projects. All affected property owners have been notified in writing, and the Department of Finance and Public Works staff held a virtual informal hearing on March 18th, 2024. There were four citizens in attendance at that meeting, and staff felt they were able to effectively answer any of their questions at that time, or by follow-up conversations as they sought additional information during the hearing. Financial considerations, statements of special assessments will be mailed to the property owners on May 17th, 2024, pending City Council approval today. Property owners have 30 days from the date of the statement to pay the assessment and avoid paying interest. The assessments not paid during this period will be in the September 2024 bond sale, and the interest added to the principal amount will be determined by the rate at which bonds sell. Principal and interest will then be spread and placed on the 2025 tax rule. Within this, there is all single-family property assessments within this group of projects will be for a period of 20 years, based on the two-year trial approved by the City Council on June 7th, 2022. Of the 112 total projects, 74 are single-family or mixed, or a mixture of single-family, multi-family zoning, and will be assessed over a 20-year period. The remaining 38 projects are either all multi-family or commercial zoning, and will be assessed over a 15-year period. It is recommended that the City Council close the public hearing, approve the proposed assessments, and place the ordinances on first reading. I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll turn it back to the bench. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, approve the proposed assessments, place the ordinances on first reading, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Tourism Business Improvement District, 2025, scope of services.
Just going to check the slides real quick, wonderful. Good morning, Mayor, Councilwoman Lindsay Pinaka, with the City Manager's Office, Division of Arts and Cultural Services. Today's presentation is what we affectionately call the TBID, the Tourism Business Improvement District, the scope of services and budget for 2025. A little bit of background about the TBID, Visit Wichita receives annual funding from the city of Wichita via the TBID and the transient guest tax for a promotion of tourism and convention activities. In 2014, the TBID was created to provide additional funding to promote tourism. The funding had experienced, previously had experienced limitations- previously had experienced limited growth in the years prior, which was the reason the TBID was created, to ensure that we were in competition for tourists and conventions afterwards. The scope of services for 2025 outlines strategies and budget allocations for leisure marketing and group sales activities to drive tourism to Wichita. Visit Wichita is helping lead local marketing efforts and critically maintains Wichita's growing travel industry and providing dollars back into the local economy. This is a five-year kind of forecast of the TBID fund, noting that we don't really track 2020 because it wasn't a great year for a lot of things. The proposed budget for 2025 is as follows. The estimated revenue, 4.1 million. The proposed leisure marketing expenses at 2.36 million. The proposed group marketing expenses at $750,800. And product development at $200,000. And general expenses for operations at $790,000. There are carryover funds anticipated with this budget, which from 2023 totaled $974,828. And the TBID board reviewed and approved the use of the carryover funds during its second February meeting of this year. And staff recommend to receive, approve, and file the TBID scope of services and budget for 2025. And with that, I'll pass it on to Susie Santo, President and CEO of Visit Wichita, to kind of talk about what this fund does and all the great work that they're doing.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Susie Santo, Visit Wichita, 515 South Main. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you so much, Lindsay. And as we market, our whole mission is to bring more visitors here. And we look at three distinct groups of potential visitors that we market to. Our leisure visitors, they're gonna come and spend the weekend, sports, bringing sporting events, and meetings and conventions. And I'm gonna take a quick look, and I've only got a few minutes, but I'm gonna share a little bit about our leisure campaign. As you can see in your packet, every dollar we spent drove $88 back in direct spending. We do this by looking at our potential drive market. We are out there every day of the year on digital advertising, social advertising, and also in the summer commercials. So, I thought I'd play for you our commercial. We tested this before we've run it. It's been running, this will be our third summer, and it has been producing outstanding results. So, let's take a look.
Something happening in Wichita. Excitement, movement, a vibe. A city that offers amazing experiences delivered with heart. From arts to attractions, nightlife to sports, you feel the energy at every turn. A little fancy, a little funky, but always friendly. Come see the place we love. We think you'll love it, too. Discover more at visitwichita.com.
So, that's just an example of one of the commercials we have out there playing, and they'll start up again this summer as we encourage those leisure visitors to come into Wichita. When we think about our group market, that's meetings, conventions, and sporting events. And this is a picture of a booth that we have at one of our trade shows when our sales managers go and take over 100 appointments. They're meeting with meeting planners and rights holders to hold sporting events, and they really develop that relationship. And so much about what the team does is build relationships to be able to bring events here. And I have to give a shout-out to Josh Howell on our team. He's our Vice President of Sports Development. The entire team is awesome. I should name them all. But Josh, again, an outstanding relationship that he built with U.S. Figure Skating allowed us to have a really exciting announcement that we made just a couple of weeks ago. And before I show that video, I do want to thank our partners at Interest Bank Arena. A.J. Beleski and his team, amazing. And Sedgwick County for keeping that facility always looking outstanding. And all of you up here at City Council and your commitment to the ice rink and keeping those sheets of ice going. That played a vital role in us being able to host sporting, host figure skating events over the last several years. We successfully hosted four of them now, and that led to the big one. And let me play a quick video for you. Does that not get you pumped? I am so excited, and we are so thrilled to get to announce that Figure Skating chose Wichita to host the Prevegan U.S. Figure Skating Championships in Wichita. First time ever in Kansas, first time ever, obviously, in Wichita coming next January. And this would not have been possible without Tourism Business Improvement District and the investment we have made over the last many years in bringing sports and groups and meetings and all of that, but producing outstanding events in the past has led us to this. We'll get to showcase to not only the nation's best athletes here in Wichita, but it's televised, primetime, NBC. It's streamed on Peacock. So, all over the U.S., they're gonna be tuning in and seeing Wichita. And we put that on the map. So, I hope all of you and everybody watching will put this on your calendar. I'm gonna wrap up by just talking a little bit more about sports. Over the last several, many years with TBID, as we've continued to invest, build those relationships, our sports market has just been booming. And I wanted to share just a little bit about what's happening in sports in Wichita. We started this year in January hosting, again, the U.S. Figure Skating Synchronized Championships. And again, due to the success of hosting, that led to the big one with the Nationals. We were out at Stryker, actually, we're out at Stryker today hosting the USA Lacrosse Women's Collegiate Championship. We'll have 32 teams in from across the country playing lacrosse out at Shields Stryker, which is awesome. We hope wrestling with NAIA Men's Wrestling and D2 Wrestling back in February, March. In June, we'll be hosting pro softball for the month out at WSU. So, you want to get out there. Also in June, at Century Two, we're hosting USA Boxing Junior Olympic. We've got, last year, we, and I talked a lot about the President's Cup. They're coming back. We've got over 100 teams, soccer teams from around the country coming in and out to Shields Stryker for a week. That is a huge event, and we're thrilled. We'll be back out at Shields Stryker again with soccer, with NCAA and NAIA Men's Soccer Championships. This leads us to January. We're hosting the big one for U.S. Figure Skating. And let's not forget, next March, we are hosting the D1 Men's Basketball Championships, Round 1 and 2. Does that not sound like an exciting lineup? So, not only are sporting events bringing those visitors and tens and millions of dollars in economic impact, but this is great for our residents, something fun to do in your own backyard. So, I want to thank the TBID Advisory Council for their work and helping us continue to, I think, produce great work. I thank you, the Council, for supporting the Tourism Business Improvement District so we're able to bring visitors and guests and dollars into our community and introduce them to what an incredible place this is, we call home. So, thank you.
Questions for staff or Visit Wichita? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one real quick here. It seems like we didn't do as well as we had hoped in Springfield and Lincoln. So, we're cutting off the funding there. Are we going to reinvest that and increase advertising in other places? Or is that savings that we can spend in another area?
We are. Thank you so much for the question. You know, we tested last year three new markets, Springfield, Lincoln, and Omaha. And I'll tell you, Springfield did not produce. So, we found that Springfield had absolutely no lift. So, we tested it, didn't work. We're not investing again. Lincoln, we found it wasn't worth the opportunity and what it returned, same thing. So, we've actually taken dollars and moved more into Omaha. So, you're gonna see a bigger presence in Omaha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for being here. This is super awesome. And I don't remember in a really long time when we've had this much cool stuff coming. And I'm a big sports fan, so I know that's not everybody's cup of tea, but I know you work really hard to find something for everybody. So, I super appreciate all of your hard work, and thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. And I just have to give a shout-out to the team. I get to stand before all of you, but we've got incredible individuals back in the office working every day to do this. So, thank you so much.
We'll tell them thank you, too.
A couple of questions from my end. So, that $4.1 million in revenue expected for 2025, I see that 2.36 will be for leisure marketing and then $750,000 for group. Can you talk about how that is divvied up when it comes to sports? Where does that fall? Does that just fall under leisure, or does that also fall under group?
Yep, a couple of things. When you look at leisure, leisure is what we showed, the commercials, the digital, and that's our drive market. Because we know the vast majority that are coming and spending the night that are coming for leisure are in that drive market. So, that is what you see out hitting everybody. We call that leisure. The group market and the sports, that's gonna be our meetings, conventions. Those are our trade shows, all of that comes out of there. And then you also see the strategic event funds. Those are those dollars that we put away for future events that are coming into town. And that's, the bulk of those really go to, they're meetings and conventions, but the bulk of those go to sports.
The question, the follow-up question to that is, does it look like because leisure, we spent 2.36 million and the economic impact is about 180 million versus the smaller amount, which is 750,000 for group, that may generate economic impact of 160 million? Is there any strategy to continue putting more or reallocating some towards more of that sports that we can see is really exciting and can really make Wichita maybe a sports capital?
Well, you know, and I will tell you, amongst our peers and amongst the trade shows, Wichita is becoming that sports city. And so, we have, again, that's back to Josh and his team, that we have built that reputation. So, we're constantly looking at the balance between how much we need to spend, and we start on that. And we're actually, I project even coming down a little bit on that leisure to open it up. The good news is, on that strategic event fund, we have the dollars there if need be for those future events. And we also, with the Council, have the ability to go back if we feel like we're missing something. But right now, we feel like this is the right balance for where we are in the market, both from a leisure and a group perspective.
Councilmember Glasscock.
First off, the ROI is just incredible, 88 for a dollar. And I love the goal of 100 for a dollar. I think that's a fine objective. I have a quick question regarding group performance because we lump in sports and convention and group performance. And the total ROI for that is 25 to 1.
Yes.
And goal is 20 to 1? Is that correct? I think so. Yeah, that was 2023 results and 2025 group performance measurements. Out of that, have we separated sports ROI versus convention ROI?
You know what? I don't really necessarily look at that. I look at the group. We sure can, and I can follow back up with you, but I tend to look at it holistically.
I just don't know if we had that information. If the sports component had a better return on investment than the convention side, I would probably believe it would. But I didn't know if we had that. And there's no need to wrap it up.
Yeah, we don't look at that right.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to throw my pitch out there. Can we go after the NFL Draft?
Would that not be awesome?
It would be.
We'll put that on our list.
Thank you very much. And again, just as a reminder, can you just reiterate that this is really generated, that the revenue is generated when we have more people coming to Wichita? If they sleep in our hotel rooms, that's how we get this revenue.
That's exactly right. Visitors generate the fund that we use to produce more visitors. This all comes through the hotels, and if we don't collect it, we don't spend it.
Thank you very much, Susie.
Thank you.
I see no further questions from staff. We will now open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay, for your presentation. And thank you also, Susie, for your presentation. Susie and I have a chance to work together significantly because of the Shields Stryker multi-sports complex. And I always appreciate everything that you and your team do. And you're always very generous to thank your team, but every teammate's a good leader. So, thank you for being that good leader. I also want to just have a little competition here because I see the goal for 2025 is 180 million. And I know when we did our last AP6 that arts has 189 million economic impact in 2023. So, let's see what we can do here. No, but seriously, also, when we met last week, you gave me this handout, and I was reviewing it in preparation for the meeting. There's 22 different sporting events in 2024 alone. And I was trying to count up the potential number of nights and just kind of gave up. But as we mentioned, that's how we get the revenue, right? So, and all of these are regional, national events that are bringing people to our great city who are not only just spending the night in a hotel, but they're eating, and hopefully, they're shopping, and they're visiting other attractions such as arts and culture, and hopefully, just getting a love for Wichita like we all have. And then finally, the spring/summer 2024 visitors guide is out that you produce. And this is a fantastic document. I think that I know a lot about Wichita, but I even learned some things that I want to put on my to-do list for this summer. So, thank you for producing this as well. But most of all, just thank you for all you do, Susie, and Visit Wichita. Appreciate it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, with a motion to approve the Tourism Business Improvement District, 2025, scope of services and budget.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Low-income housing tax credit fee waiver incentive.
Again, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tim Goodpast here with the City Manager's Office of Development Services. The next item before you is a request for a low-income housing tax credit fee waiver incentive. According to the Office of Policy Development and Research at the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, the low-income housing tax credit, or LITEC, program is the most important resource for creating affordable housing in the United States. The LITEC program in Kansas is administered by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. KHRC has two levels of programs, a 9% tax credit and a 4% tax credit. The 9% tax credits are for new construction and rehabilitation of competitive tax credit projects and typically can deliver up to a 70% subsidy. The 4% credits are for projects utilizing at least 50% in federally tax-exempt bond financing and can deliver up to 30% tax subsidy. The state of Kansas is currently matching the federal awards dollar-for-dollar, which bumps the 9% projects to an 85% subsidy and 4% projects to a 50% subsidy, which makes both of the programs extraordinarily competitive. Mayor, to your question you asked me earlier, how many projects were awarded 9% projects over the last seven years? I had stated seven. It's actually four that were awarded in the City of Wichita over the last seven years that were actually awarded 9% credits. Last year, five were submitted from Wichita, and none scored high enough to receive an award. Those projects indicated that they did not score well in the other support category, which is a specific category in the application. The other support category can receive points for the following: land donation from local government, historic rehabilitation tax credits, a sales tax exemption, and a fee waiver. Based upon the unit size, the number of units in the project, the projects can be awarded five points or 10 points based upon the dollar amount of the fee waivers on the schedule you can see on this slide. So, we're gonna take an example of a 36-unit project that is approximately a $14 million investment. And the reason we selected 36 units is that over the last seven years of those projects that have been applying to the state, the average has been 36 units with an investment of approximately 14 million. That includes a scale of nine and a half to an 11 and a half million in construction costs in terms of the investment. Therefore, extrapolating from that construction cost, the building and construction fees are somewhere between $41,000 and approximately $48,000 for those projects. Metropolitan counties can only receive up to four awards. So, in this scenario, if the City of Wichita were to receive four awards, the maximum total fee waiver would be approximately $190,000. Also, if four awards were given to the City of Wichita with an average of 36 units, and again, that range of investment, we would be seeing 144 new affordable housing units valued at $56 million in terms of the investment in those projects. 9% tax credit projects are only awarded once a year. May 10th is the deadline for 2025. May 10th is the deadline for 2024. The fee waiver that we are requesting, the incentive for the 9% projects is only for the current applicants for the 2024 process. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the city council approve a fee waiver incentive for projects awarded 9% low-income housing tax credits in the 2024 application process. And I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, starting with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for the presentation. This is certainly not my area of content expertise. So I'm certainly trying to learn. Something that's vitally important is we're all trying to address affordable housing and our homelessness issue in our community. And we have to be more competitive because other communities are facing the same and are also going to be seeking these, right? So what I heard you say is that other support is the category that we need to bolster up so that we can be more competitive. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And just for someone who's, I would say, a novice in this area like myself or other people in the community who may be here or watching or listening later, explain just really, you know, neighbor-at-your-mailbox kind of conversation, how this will help with the other support category so that we can be more competitive?
So as Troy said earlier, and we've alluded to here, by approving the fee waivers, projects can gain an additional five or 10 points depending upon the level of fees that are involved in the project. Again, these are only for the projects that are applying now. And just because they, this, if the fee waiver incentive is approved, doesn't mean it's necessarily granted. They would have to receive the tax credits in order to receive the fee waiver incentive.
Okay, thank you. Then my next question, just a follow-up, is this is one strategy to help us be stronger in the other support category, correct?
That is correct.
Are there other strategies that we're looking at so that we can continue to be more competitive?
There aren't today, though, with the city, with the state of Kansas rather matching the federal tax credits. We have seen a huge interest in low-income housing tax credit projects. And it is certainly something that we in housing are talking about. How can we find ways to be more competitive and support programs like this so that we can see more affordable housing projects in the city of Wichita?
Okay, great. You do great work in our Department of Housing and Community Services does amazing work. So I'm confident that you'll be able to collaborate together to help us be more successful in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Yeah, a few questions. We're doing this for the 9%, not the 4% because the 9% is due in three days.
That's correct.
So all the applicants, how many do we have submitted right now from the city of Wichita?
So my understanding is that there are six projects in the city of Wichita that are applying for 9% tax credits.
So this would go to all six of those units just for 2024 as kind of a pilot to see if this helps?
It would go to a maximum of four. Communities can only be awarded a maximum of four projects. So if we were to, if all six were approved, we could only, we could only provide this for four of them.
And the, how would we make that determination?
Well, I think honestly, there's probably three or four of them that are probably the strongest contenders based upon what we know about what their points are. A couple of weeks ago, you all approved a sales tax exemption for a couple of projects. You approved another one today. That makes some of those the strongest ones in the city of Wichita.
So what are the strongest projects right now?
So there is one that is down at 55th Street South and Broadway. There's 212 North Market. And the third one, I'm going to draw a blank on, off the top of my head.
So this doesn't have a negative effect on MABCD's budget? Just because if we're awarded the projects, there are projects that are likely not going to happen unless they're awarded the 9% tax credit?
So it could have an impact, obviously, up to if we were looking at the dollar amounts that we're looking at. It could be, if we had four projects awarded, it could have an impact on MABCD not being able to receive the 190,000. The odds are realistically, it's something less than that based upon what projects are approved by Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for the 9% credits.
And what's the most that we've ever been awarded in one year? You said there's been seven in the past five years.
There's been four in the past seven years in Wichita, so it's been a pretty low number.
Okay, fantastic. And so this will retroactively waive the fees for the projects that are currently in application?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheizer.
Thank you, Mayor. Have any of those fees been paid yet?
No.
Okay. Now, this is, so this is essentially just a break for the next couple of days until we get the people into the 9% application.
Correct. And this would only have an impact, in all likelihood, in next year's budget because most of these projects, even if they get awarded, they will get awarded in July. Most of them won't get started because they don't have full architectural plans and all that. They wouldn't likely happen until next year.
Okay, so remind me again, next fall would be the next time the 9% LIHTC credits will be out for?
So next May will be the next, yeah, a year from now would be the next round of 9% credits.
Is this going to impact any of the plans between now and then? If they say, hey, we applied for it in October of 2024 when this program was still verified by us here today? Is that going to have any impact in 2025 in any applications?
No, we'd have to come back to you and request another round of fee waiver incentive if we were going to look at something in 25.
Okay, just one little kind of off-the-wall question. How often are the 4% tax credits reviewed?
Those are given out, I believe, twice a year.
Twice a year?
Yeah.
When's the next round of that?
The next round of that, I want to say, is July, I think, is the next round of 4% tax credits.
Is there anything? How often are Wichita projects approved for the 4%?
So over the last several years, we've had six or seven projects. But with the state of Kansas matching the federal tax credits, that has driven more interest in affordable housing projects. So we're seeing more people looking at them than we have in the past. I've been with the city over 13 years. And in the first eight or nine of those, we did maybe a handful of projects at best. And we've seen probably eight or 10 in the last few years.
Okay, is there anything we're looking at to help that process along? Or do we feel pretty good about where we are with that?
Yeah, we're working with housing, just given the interest that we've seen. We were working with Housing and Community Services to see what ways we can partner up and making sure that we're making developers aware of all of the programs that Housing and Community Services has in addition to what the state has in terms of the low-income housing tax credit programs.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Baller.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I just want to make sure that I understand. So this is basically a tool in the toolbox that we can offer to encourage someone maybe to do one of these projects or apply. But if there's, project doesn't get selected, it's over. I mean, it didn't cost us anything or anything like that. So it's just to encourage an incentive for people to apply for the?
Yeah, normally when I'm coming to you with projects, it's a project that's going to occur. In this scenario with this fee waiver incentive program, we're helping them with their application to score better by offering this. So there's no guarantee that any of these projects will be selected by KHRC.
Sure. Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Glasscock.
One last question. So out of the applicants from Wichita that apply for LIHTC credits, how many of them have continued a project if they didn't receive the credits?
I don't think any of the projects would move forward if they don't receive the tax credits because they're just not financially viable.
Good. Thank you.
And I have several questions for you. Okay, of the four that have received LIHTC credit over the last seven years, can you tell us who those four are?
I cannot tell you off the top of my head who those are. I think in terms of some of the 9% versus 4%, I don't know that I could break that out. There's a developer out of Denver, Colorado called Steel Properties that has applied, I believe, typically for the 4% tax credits. They're on their fifth project in Wichita over the last six or seven years. I couldn't tell you the other ones off the top of my head.
The reason why I ask that question is, obviously, they received it, so they got past the hurdle. I wanted to see what you have learned from them in regards to how they got over that hurdle of actually receiving LIHTC credit. Because as of last year, we had a total of five who submitted from our area and zero got awarded.
Correct.
So I wanted to see what lessons have been learned in order for us to now hopefully be competitive enough so that we can max out and get the four that we can maximum have.
Yeah, and that's where what we've learned from them is this other support category in the application is the area that Kansas Housing Resource Corporation has told those projects that they did not score well because we didn't have a fee waiver agreement. They may not have gotten a sales tax exemption. And so we're looking at those things to try to do what we can in advance of their applications being in to make sure that we are doing what we can to give them the maximum points.
And can you go over the application process in regards to the number of points? So you can get up to 20 points if you get a sales tax exemption and a property tax exemption. And this would be a maximum point of 10 points if we do this fee waiver. So what are other point systems if you get this application?
There are a variety of things. These applications are pretty massive applications in terms of what they put in. And they get graded on the, how affordable they are, what the target market is in terms of the area median income. We were talking about 212 North Market and that they've broken it up into tiers where they have 30% of area median income, 40% of area median income, and then 60% of area median income being the maximum income that they would accept in terms of the tenants in their facilities. So the more affordable they are, the better they score. There's a huge range of things that they get scored on. I believe there's a total of 100 points that they can get up to based upon the various categories.
I would like to follow up on the four that have received over the last seven years.
Sure.
I will send it, once you send it to me, I'll send it to the council, too. Thank you. We will close the bench portion for this moment, give it to the public. Any questions from the public? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Any further questions from the bench or comments?
Mayor, I will say, I'm speculating and we will get confirmation, but I'm going to guess that at least some of the four were projects that council had approved sales tax and property tax abatement for. So they received the scores in this category. Many projects, however, do not want to go forward with sales tax, property tax abatement, and that's why the fee waivers are coming forward. But we'll get confirmation of that.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for being innovative for this. And especially, it's a 2024 application. Let's see if it works. If it doesn't work, we don't do it in 2025. So I appreciate if you guys are thinking a way to expand and make us a more competitive state level.
Is there a motion to approve?
With the motion, Mayor, I move that we approve a fee waiver incentive for the projects awarded, the 9% low-income housing tax credit in the 2024 application process.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposing sign? Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
West Link Branch Library Automated Material Handling System contract.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jamie Mix with the Wichita Public Library, here to talk with you about some further progress with our West Link Branch project. You all authorized the funds for the expansion in December of 2023. And then we also brought forward an MOU with the Wichita Public Library Foundation to be able to work in partnership for them to do a capital campaign for $2 million to provide a margin of excellence for both West, or actually, all of West Link, Rockwell, Angelo, and Alfred. We know that the West Wichita readers are just voracious. They were circulating 43% of our branch circulation before we began the remodel project. And as such, we're really looking for some opportunities to improve workflows and provide staff more capacity in direct public service rather than material handling. As part of this, too, we were able to use innovation funds to transition our entire million items in our physical collection to RFID. And so as a result of this project, we'll be able to even move materials faster. So our Advanced Learning Library has an automated material handling system. If you have been there, you've seen it as you walk in the door. This has really proved to be an incredible staff time saver as it checks in, sorts, and kind of does the prep work for our staff who then are returning materials to the shelves. Our foundation's capital campaign includes the funds for this automated material handling system. And so this would be leveraging that MOU for us to be able to integrate it into the project. We've worked with our architect and tech logic, who is the provider of the technology at the Advanced Learning Library. And keeping with that ensures that we have continuity of service and maintenance. So there's a city code that allowed us to kind of build out our existing AMH system with tech logic. Our law department's approved and signed the contract. And the amount that the foundation would pay is $281,318.46. So we're asking today that you all approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures so we can get it contracted and built in time for the West Link reopening.
Questions for staff, starting with Councilmember Hoheizer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. Is this going to replace any current employees that we have?
No, the building's doubling in size. And so we're needing to be really strategic about how we're navigating square footage. This will just really improve our return to the shelf of materials.
Okay.
A lot faster.
Councilmember Johnston.
Jamie, thank you very much for the presentation. You did a great job. Just like to point out that West Wichita appears to read a lot.
Yeah, you do.
Because it's up to 43% of all branches are checked out of the West Library. So thank you for the good work and it obviously is much needed there.
Yeah, we're excited to expand the physical material collection as well as technology there to be able to support.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. Other than, I do want to ask you, Jamie, when will construction be completed?
The la, well, we're in the throes of it. And I would be happy once a little bit more significant construction is completed to give you all tours. We're looking at December, January of this year, so.
Jamie. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Any further questions or comments? The West Link resides in Councilmember Johnston's district. Would you like to?
I would probably like the motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the tech logic contract to purchase automated material handling system for the West Link Branch or Library and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further questions? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposing sign? Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Property and evidence fire suppression.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Captain Casey Slaughter with Wichita PD Property Crimes and Technical Services. Those are the two sections I am in charge of. WPD uses space in the Rounds and Porter Building directly to our west for property and evidence, the police lab, digital forensics, and latent prints. On March 16th, 2021, City Council approved a $1.25 million fund in the general bond funding for fire suppression. The planned fire suppression at that point was mostly for dry chemical and some water for fire suppression. P&amp;E stores, sensitive materials that are obviously susceptible to water damage. So this was obviously changed, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The project includes fire life safety, electrical system improvements, and fire suppression installation. The, there are three floors in P&amp;E. This is going to cover floors one and two for the fire suppression. And suppression was planned originally for 2021, as I mentioned earlier, but the pandemic significantly changed and altered that timeline. And so the cost increases from the original 1.25 million to the estimated 2 million are because of the inflationary pressures since that point. And then the original budget with some water has now changed to all dry chemical. And that's based on our auditor as well and the recommendations there. there. So some of the financial considerations on this are the Public Works has received estimates between $1.7 and $2.1 million from outside vendors. And then the 2024 to 2033 adopted CIP, this includes an additional $750,000 in general obligation bonds for fire suppression within the ongoing projects portion, and that brings the total to $2 million. So our recommendation is the City Council approve the project, adopt the amending bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'll stand for questions.
Questions for staff, starting with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Captain Slaughter, for being here. First question, do we not have anything now?
There's currently no fire suppression whatsoever, other than we have some fire extinguishers in there. So this is a project long overdue.
And then you said floors one and two?
One and two.
Why not three?
So three, it's been determined by an outside architect, and Public Works can speak to this as well, that three is not necessary at this point. The auditor has apparently agreed as well in my side conversations with Public Works that floor three is not necessary at this time.
Okay, I'll trust them. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. Any questions or comments from the comm, from the public? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming to share all the information with you. I was hoping I was going to have about 40 questions for you, but you did a great job, so I don't have any. But thanks for being here. I move to, it is recommended that the City Council approve the project, adopt the amending bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Loan agreement for the Wichita Water Works project.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you this morning is project finance, project financing for Wichita Water Works, and specifically request for approval of the fourth and final SRF loan agreement. Just some quick background on a few things. As you know, our water treatment facility, Wichita Water Works, is nearing completion of construction. We will have an annual update on Wednesday. Hopefully you all can make that, and you'll hear more about it. And as such, we're trying to wrap up things is on the final installment of the SRF loan. Project financing overall, WFI is providing, WFI loans providing 49%, SRF is 47%. I'll show you breakdown of that in a moment, with the balance being in water utility, cash, and revenue bonds. The WFI credit agreement, which was approved by the City Council in April of 2020, provides almost $281 million in loan funding plus capitalized interest. The SRF financing is provided in a series of loans, which I'll show some details in a second. It's different interest rates for each loan, but all other terms are the same. The aggregate total, including the capitalized interest, is just over $267 million. Utilization of this funding results in a estimated savings of $83 million compared to traditional revenue bonds. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but the City Council first approved the first loan installment, loan number one in November of 2020. Since that time, there's been two others. Obviously, we're here today for the fourth and final loan agreement. You can see that the interest rates are very favorable for SRF. It's providing the best financing that we've been able to identify for both this project and BNR. The estimated savings for each loan is shown at the bottom, resulting in that $83 million. The insurance cost for loan four is part of the item for today, a request to move forward with that payment, which needs to be made by the 17th so we can move forward and close this loan. The estimated savings overall for Wichita Water Works with WFI was $97 million. I mentioned it's $83 million for SRF, but a total estimated savings of $180 million overall for financing of the entire project compared to traditional revenue bonds. The savings are estimated in comparison, again, to traditional revenue bonds, and these are estimates that we received from both EPA and through the, through the state and local government series rate table for SRF. The rates will not be impacted. You've seen this before. It should look familiar to you on the water side. The annual debt payments estimated by KDHE are in line with those previous estimates. There would be no changes to the projected future rate adjustments that's been shared with the council since 2019 as a result of this loan. Staff recommends City Council approve the loan agreement, authorize the required insurance payment to be paid out of the Water Utility Fund operating budget, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, starting with Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Gary. Can you explain SRF?
SRF is a state revolving loan fund available through KDHE, and it's federal money that comes down through KDHE. But we've been able to use that to fund almost half of each of our major projects, Wichita Water Works and BNR. And what it does, again, the interest rates are the most competitive. They're generally about 60% of market rate. So balancing that with WFI and a small amount of traditional financing is what's allowed us to smooth the rates out over a period of time, which was previously discussed with council, and provide, again, the best overall financing at the best cost for the rate payers to have the least amount of impact on the rates themselves.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. I just want to make sure everybody knows what the acronym stands for, because sometimes they can be a lot.
Yes, thank you. I should have mentioned.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. Thank you, Gary. We'll open it up for public comment. Any comments or questions from the public? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Gary, I don't, I don't know if you still have that, but I think when this comes up next year, if you have that price or rate chart from when we first got the SRF, that would be helpful. I don't hear a lot of questions about it, but when folks talk about the increase in water rates when we do that, and I highlight without these, we would have been at 12% to 15% instead of the five. But I think it would just be helpful next time if that was in the presentation, just to point it out.
I think that's a great idea, and we'll do that.
I believe this resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district.
Thank you. I move that the City Council approve the SRF loan agreement, authorize the required insurance payment to be paid out of the Water Utility Fund operating budget, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Construction agreement for biological nutrient removal plant two, package three, structure, and ultraviolet disinfection improvements.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you at the moment would approve a construction, a contract for construction services for Plant Two, Package Three, under the city's Biological Nutrient Reduction Program. Just a little bit of background here, the main, the primary driver for this project are emerging requirements for nutrient reduction on the Plant Two discharge into the Arkansas River. We're required to be compliant for reduction in phosphorus and nitrogen by January 1 of 2028. This also provides opportunities to address needed odor control improvements at both Plant One and Plant Two, which will greatly improve conditions within the neighborhood around those facilities. This also allows us to renew and rehab aging and failing assets, and then where it's feasible, configure the project in such a way that we can accommodate future growth capacity as well as other emerging permanent conditions. The table in front of you here lays out the individual packages for the program, and the two columns on the right show the timeline, including the date of council authorization for each package, and then the target completion date. I think the important thing to see here is that we're still on target with each individual package to finish in time for permanent compliance. The packages include engineering services for both design and the owner's representative, then improvements to Plant One, six individual packages for Plant Two, and then a package that will rehab the Cowskin Force Main. This is a Force Main line that delivers influent from the western portion of the basin to Plant Two. Today's item is Package Three, and it includes the biological nutrient removal treatment works for the nitrogen and phosphorus. As I mentioned, this is kind of the heart and soul of the project. It's really a, you can't describe what this is going to look like. It's a massive structure that's larger than a football field, multiple chambers, a total depth of about 20 feet, and it includes a state-of-the-art hydrocyclone sledge separation facility to ensure the best environment for the favorable bacteria to grow in that provides the treatment that we need to knock the nutrients down. We'll also modify existing basins, provide additional zones for treatment, and this will all work together to, to get the proper levels of phosphorus and nitrogen that we need in the effluent. This also, this package also includes improvements to the disinfection system, which uses ultraviolet light to make sure there are no actively growing bacteria in the effluent before it's discharged into the river. There are portions of sensitive equipment that are below the base flood elevation, so we'll need to raise that up. And then we're also adding additional capacity for redundancy and for future growth. The base bid package was very favorable, and this allowed us to include some bid alternates, including replacement of the final clarifier scum pumps and piping, as well as replacement of some severely deteriorated asphalt on the plant, and then much-needed improvements to the failing HVAC system in the admin building. We utilized a value-based approach to procurement for this package, and it was a competitive sealed proposal, which uses a combination of fee and most qualified firm. 80% of the consideration was for the fee, and then the remaining 20% was based upon the proposers' experience on similar projects, their staff capacity and experience, local participation of businesses, and then EBE and DBE participation. The selection process followed administrative regulations and the standard procurement process. Two firms were interviewed by the Staff Screening and Selection Committee, Garni Construction, and Don Linger Wildcat Biological Nutrient Reduction, BP03 LLC. Both were interviewed by the Steering Committee, and Don Linger Wildcat BNR BP03 LLC was selected as the most qualified firm. Financial considerations include the proposed base fee for construction, $144,102,600, with the add alternates, including $3,587,000. Funding is available in the BNR program budget as approved by council and amended on March 5, 2024. I'd like to recommend that City Council approve the contract for BNR Package Three construction and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions as you have.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your work on this, Don. This has been a huge project, the second largest one in the city. We're not here to talk about odor control today, even though I appreciate all the work on that. Can you talk a little bit about how we're configured for future requirements that may come down the pipeline? I know there's a lot of talk now about forever chemicals and making sure that we're not putting those in the water supply, but just in general, just what ideas do we have? How is it set up for future requirements and improvements?
You bet. So, so what we're looking at is a type of technology that we're using for nutrient reduction, knowing that in the future, there's, there's a methodology called enhanced, enhanced nutrient reduction. So there will be another step to knock nutrients down sometime in the future, 15, 20 years out, something like that. So we wanted to make sure that we're using a technology that would dovetail with that, and then configure that in such a way that when that has to be built, that we limit our cost. And then we're also looking at, at growth, right, and capacity, so that when we increase our permit for the volume, that we're able to accommodate that affordably. And as far as the forever chemicals, that's down the line a ways. This process really wouldn't affect that treatment, but it is something that we are looking at in the future and are engaged with KDHE and taking a look at our effluent, what that's looking like in the conditions of the river and everything else.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Hoheisel's district. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to make two quick comments. I have the pleasure of serving on the BNR Steering Committee with Councilmember Hoheisel. And, and Don, I just want to thank you and your team, and, and Councilmember Hoheisel kind of beat me to it, that this is the second largest project the city's ever seen. And it's not as visible necessarily, or maybe as kind of fancy as the water treatment plant, but equally as important. So thank you for all you, and I know there's been some staff changes and different things, but from the loan process application all the way to where we are, just incredible work from you and your team. And then I want to thank Councilmember Hoheisel. I've learned a lot from you about this process and serving on the Steering Committee with you, and thank you for just being a champion for something that is really important to not just the residents in your district, but the entire city. So thank you.
Just as a reminder, since we've both had a water and a BNR project in the last two items, it's a reminder to community that the city of Wichita is making big investments in infrastructure. In water alone, it's $494 million, and in BNR, it's $357 million. So major investments, again, into infrastructure. So I will allow Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. And before that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Councilmember Tuttle for her hard work in securing the WFI funding, which is saving Wichita taxpayers a considerable amount of money over the length of these two projects. So thank you for that, Councilmember Tuttle. So I would like to move that the City Council approve the Package Three agreement with Don Linger Wildcat BNR, PB03 LLC, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Adoption of the National Electrical Code 2023 Edition.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers. Chris Labor, Metro Area Building and Construction Department. Item before you today is, just as stated, the adoption of the National Electrical Code. It's the 2023 edition with local amendments. So the NEC is Article Four within our Unified Building and Trade Code. As stated, this updates the national code as well as our local amendments to that code. This is published by the National Fire Protection Agency. It's NFPA 70. It does nest and is designed to nest with the International Code Council codes that we use. We do have one uniform code, which is the plumbing code, but electrical and plumbing really do not, are the two codes that really do not have a lot of coordination involved. Our codes, our trades codes specifically are revised every three years. We try to keep those updated with the national standards. That's how often those are released in order to remain current with the industry. And in this case, we see so many technological changes and advances between code cycles. We want to be able to stay up with that and allow that for our local industry. So the other codes that we coordinate with are listed here. Again, the remaining codes that we work with and to include the fire code. The latest adoption of the NEC was in September of 2020. That is currently the code that we are working under, which is the 2020 version with 27 local amendments. This moves us to the 2023 with 20 local amendments, so we're happy to be able to reduce those. One thing that we're very happy about with that is it's an indicator that some of our amendments are being picked up in the national code, absolving the need for those. So we're always glad to see that take place, and of course, to streamline our requirements. You will see as we get into some of the details that we have two items, that by the design of the NEC, they are putting the accommodations for the code in place. the design of the NEC, they are putting the accommodations for the code in place, but they are extending the requirement date for those. We have actually even further extended the required date in our amendment, and we've also given ourselves an option for exclusion with those items. And again, I'll explain that as we get into some specifics. We also then have two areas that we did exclude items from the national code that we'll explain. So this was presented last week at the Board of, excuse me, County Commissioners for Sedgwick County at a public hearing. So the public hearing is held on the county side. We did have a handful of members from the public attend that. Most of them were industry representatives. Only one individual spoke. He did speak in support of the code. The county did not pass it unanimously, I want to point out. So one commissioner was absent, who had the voice support for the code. One commissioner did express and does express concern over two of the amendments that we have, or actually a lack of amendment that we have in the code. There are two new items in the code that he was, is, remains concerned about. So again, we'll discuss those in detail at that point. So the vote, I guess, sorry to finish my thought there, the vote was three to one with the commissioners who were in place. So though there was a great deal of discussion about those items, in the end, the commissioner did not recommend to keep the public hearing open and did not recommend to defer adoption of the code, just indicated his lack of support for those two items. The use of this code, of course, is unincorporated Sedgwick County, as well as the city of Wichita, and then also the 18 smaller cities that utilize us for support in their areas will, at least in some form, use and adopt this code. We also assist Sumner County and Butler County in a few areas, so they will also, at least to some extent, be covered by this code. Since the last adoption and our last few cycles, our contractors and community have been very cooperative with the code. It's been, it has worked very well. So we've seen very good staff and industry support. We have not had any safety or major management issues. Anything that has come up has been very easily solved. And again, even though there is a fair amount of discussion with a few of these items, the amendments are actually very relative, very minimal for this code, so it's a relatively minimal change in amendment. That to ensure that we explain the process, so this was led by the Board of Electrical Appeals. Staff, obviously, very involved with that, but we gave them oversight of the code review and adoption. Was coordinated with the industry association, specifically the National Electrical Contractors Association and the Independent Electrical Contractors. Both of those organizations also have training agencies and some sub-agencies that were involved in this. Of course, both of our fire departments in Sedgwick County and Wichita are key elements to that review, as well as the electrical suppliers, since a lot of the code does cover equipment that is coming into the industry. And then we always coordinate with the Wichita Area Builders Association with our trades codes. That all kind of depends on how much is there and what the changes are. You will see, as we go into the amendments here, that the, those with any significance do impact the residential market. So with that, we'll get into those, and this, the first one that we will explain, and these are, of course, not all of the amendments, but the ones that we certainly wanted to see, make sure that the public saw in the public forum. The first, and this one did gain a great deal of discussion and is one of the ones that our commissioner is concerned about, but simply what this does is allows for a lower amperage circuit breaker on certain items in the home, as well as a reduced level of wiring for those. So light switches, bathroom exhaust fans, gas fireplace, for example, very low amperage, very low draw on power, especially with LED technology that's in place now. So the code is allowing a reduction for those circuits only to go to a 10-amp circuit breaker. And the item that created some concern is that it also allows for an aluminum wire that is copper-clad to be in place, based, again, on that low draw. So there is some concern about what the safety of that wire could be. We know that those are being nationally tested. They will be released after testing in the laboratory. So the interesting part of this is that those products are not on the market yet. So staff's recommendation and the board's recommendation that we have stuck with is we do not want to amend that out of the code at this point because that would prohibit us from having a chance to use those. We do know that we will still have more to come with this. We'll have to take a look at those as they come to market. If we have a concern at that point, we would then readdress that, both in our inspection practices as well as through the code, if that became a requirement. So we as staff do not see a safety issue or a safety concern with this. Again, we still have monitoring to do, but the code has accommodated this in order to allow those components to come to market, and we feel that we should support that and allow that to play out, so to speak. Then, another item, which has not been controversial in the adoption at all, but that was a great deal of discussion, just to ensure that we did this correctly, was with power on island countertops in homes. So we did have a lot, and I was very happy to see how this went, had a lot of discussion over a few different meetings with the builders. And actually, Mr. Nordic, as our main staff representative, our chief electrician, as well as the BEA, actually put language in that was a little bit less restrictive than what the builders initially recommended that they would support, given what the code stated. So previously, the code required electricity be put to a kitchen island, an island countertop. And that was to prohibit someone, or to reduce someone doing the electricity incorrectly later on, and of course, causing a great safety issue there. So the new code no longer requires, it's less restrictive in that it no longer requires power to be at the countertop, but if power is at an island countertop, it is more restrictive in how it is there, specifically that we are no longer allowing outlets, outlet receptacles on the outside of the countertop. There were numerous, it's listed on the slide, there were 9,700-plus accidents with children that were documented over the last cycle of, few cycles of the code, where they have grabbed that electrical cord that hangs over the side of the counter and pulled a hot item off, resulting in some level of injury. So the new stipulation of the code states that, again, note, a receptacle would not be allowed on the side of an island countertop or peninsula countertop. If it is on the countertop, it has to be a pop-up, or there has to be a backsplash involved so that it is against a back wall. So that will regulate that, change that. And then it also requires that the power must, the countertop must be available for power. So in the case of a basement or a crawl space, there's access to that peninsula so that power can be placed later. In the case of a slab home, there has to be a raceway conduit installed in the foundation, which that's pretty common practice anyway. The only difference now is the, it would be between the builder and the consumer as to whether they go ahead and put the wiring in, or as to whether they just leave the conduit there so wiring could be pulled later. And then again, it will be completely up to the builder and the customer as to whether they even want power at the island at all. Another one that, now, it comes in two pieces, but this one did create some of the concern, and that is with surge protection on buildings. So to begin with, this one addresses commercial buildings. As generally speaking, commercial buildings already have surge protection associated with the building. That has been expanded in the 2023 code to include that areas, any dwelling-type area in a commercial building. So our multifamily, especially at the smaller multifamily buildings, are built to a lot of residential standards, so they're kind of a mix of commercial and residential. So this ensures that surge protection is incorporated in any multifamily apartment-type building. It also protects the feeder areas that would be going to a dorm area, or where patient care or anything like that is taking place, where people are residing and sleeping. So it expands a little bit the requirements for surge protection on a building associated with these commercial living areas. The second one, and this is specifically what our commissioner did, has questioned and continues to question a great deal, and that is also a requirement to provide surge protection for residential homes. So in the last cycle, this was in the code. We looked at it as more of insurance or protection of the devices in the home, the electronics in the home, and less of a life safety issue, and therefore, we amended it out of the code at, in 2020. We were not the only jurisdiction to do that. The National Fire Protection Agency has informed all of us who did that that was not their intent. They specifically released with their commentary on this cycle that this is designed as a safety protection due to the number of items, such as fire alarms, ground fault protection, arc fault protection, et cetera, that now have circuit chips in them, and a surge can damage that chip and damage the protection or reduce the protection provided by those devices. So our board did a lot of research, a lot of background look in that, because we do know that this adds an expense to the cost of a house. That expense is relatively minimal in the grand scheme, anywhere from about $100 to $700, depending on the size of the house. So we're seeing an average of $100 to $250 in added expense on the houses that are being built in the jurisdiction now. We actually have, our builders and electricians are installing these on about a third of the houses that are being constructed today, as they see, they see the same issue. They see it as a safety issue, as well as a consumer protection issue if the items are being damaged in the house. So this is not lightning protection or anything like that. It will not, it's not designed to protect from a major event. It's designed to protect if something creates an electrical surge into the home that could, again, damage not only your high-dollar appliances, but also your safety devices based on the cards, et cetera, that are in those. So in the end, and after a great deal of discussion, staff did, did and does recommend this enough of a safety item that it should remain in the code. And I want to emphasize with all of these, or each of these described, that it is not something we are putting in the code. This is the national standard of the national code. We are electing to not amend those, and, but wanting to ensure, since we have amended these in the past, and then since we are, of course, aware of that impact, wanting to make sure that we fully explain those. The last one that we have on this is a little bit simpler, something that's been coming for a while, and that's physical protection in agricultural buildings. So this, of course, mainly going to be an issue in the county, but where you've got, anytime you have a building that is housing livestock, a lot of problems with rodents chewing on the wires. So those wires have to either be sheathed, so they're protected from that, or in a conduit, again. If the wire's not exposed, if it's in a wall where it's not able to be accessed, not able to be seen, then it has to be protected in order to avoid that level of damage. And then a few last provisions to point out, as far as, as stated earlier, those provisions that we had removed from the code. So in 2020, the code included requirements for field testing of ground fault and arc energy performance on commercial buildings. We went, we left that in the code at the time. What we found is that these are very expensive tests that have not yet revealed any issues. They're time-consuming, they're expensive, and there is also a requirement for the manufacturer to perform this testing before those components are released. So we see that as excessive at this point, and we do not see that as a safety concern. So we are removing that field testing requirement only from the code, would still have to be tested prior to purchase and installation, but we will no longer require those tests of our, in our commercial projects. One thing that we've had in our local amendments for many years is a stipulation that in a new home, when you installed your circuit panel, you had to leave at least four extra spaces for future growth. It's a smart thing to do, it's a safe thing to do. We still recommend that everybody plans for the future, but we do see that as, we don't see any reason to continue regulating that. Most people do that anyway, and then again, for the sake of ensuring that we're not overly burdensome, we won't tell you how many extra spaces to put in your house or how much to plan for the future. We'll just continue to recommend that you do. The last two, it's been kind of interesting to see the code work with these the way they did, and there's a desire through the national agency to put ground fault, ground fault circuit interruption protection in the higher-level circuits. So your 250-volt circuits, which are going to be, of course, your air conditioners in a commercial setting, something like a welder or machinery. The, these devices do not work very well. They continue to not work very well, and we also do not see them providing a very high level of protection. So that is why the code is allowing them, but not requiring them, even at the national level, and stating that they will begin requiring this in the next cycle. So in one aspect, we are maintaining that. If someone wants to install these, we have the criteria to inspect them. We'll allow that, we won't prohibit it, but we are not requiring it, and we are also stating that we will, even if the code requires this next cycle, we will not adopt that right away. We will wait at least a year to ensure that the newer products are, have fixed the problems that we see currently, before we'll be willing to evaluate this for any potential or future adoption. So with all of that, we will, of course, gladly stand for questions. I've got Electrical Chief Chris Nordic here with me. Again, the public hearing was conducted at the BOCC, but we would fully expect that, of course, like with other items, that we would accept any public comment here. And at the end of that is staff recommendation that City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Chris, questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So who's going to look at potential changes if the low, the low-amp aluminum wiring does have issues? Is that going to include people from the building trades as well?
Yes. Yes, sir, it will. So our Board of Electrical Appeals also has electrical suppliers on that in contact, so we'll maintain, we will maintain that contact as these come to market, so that Mr. Nordic is able to be involved in that.
Okay. So do we have any idea when the, when the recommendations might come out from people looking at it now?
We don't at this point. We're starting to see the circuit breakers themselves come out, but we have not seen anything on the wiring yet.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation and all the work on this, and I was really glad to see that you engaged the electrical trade organizations to be involved. Just to clarify, because I heard about what happened with our friends at the county, and the one thing that I didn't, I don't know if I got solved in my head, is one commissioner had a specific issue with Article 230.67, correct? So the group, the electrical professionals who reviewed these, made recommendations, worked with you. What was their stance on that specific article?
That it should remain in the code. And actually, those individuals, we did meet with that commissioner a few different times and discussed that, and in the end, we held our, held our recommendation, and that's, and went forward with the code as you've seen it here today.
Thank you very much.
I see no further questions for staff. Thank you. We will open it up for public comment. Any comments from the public? We see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll go ahead and make the recommendation that the City Council place on first reading the ordinance to amend Article Four, Section A, Article Four, Section One, and Article Four, Section Two of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. We'll open it, sorry. We'll have a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven-zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
ZON 2024-13, Zone Change Request in the City From TF3 Two-Family Residential District To Be Multifamily Residential District To Construct A Multifamily Property Generally Located On The East Side Of North Lorraine Avenue Within 550 Feet North Of East Second Street North.
Good morning. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department here to present this item. In this case, as you heard, the applicant is requesting a change In this case, as you heard, the applicant is requesting to change the zoning from TF3 two-family to be multifamily. The item is being heard today for a couple of reasons. First, because the District Advisory Board vote was tied, and second, because there was a protest that was received against the application. I'll talk more about that later, but it's important to note that that was outside of the protest area. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they're requesting a zone change so that they can build a multifamily building on the site. The site is currently vacant, as you can see here. It is generally located to the north and west of Second Street and Hillside Avenue. It consists of one parcel, is zone TF3, and is currently vacant. According to our records, the house was last present on the site sometime around 1983. In terms of context, properties to the north and west are zone TF3 and developed with single-family homes. Property to the south is zone B and developed with an apartment complex, which is also owned by the applicant. Property to the east is zone G O, said green color, and developed with a medical office. The staff report provides additional information about property development standards, screening, landscaping, and parking. In terms of review, on March 28th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item. They recommended approval nine to zero, so it was unanimous. Five members of the public spoke in opposition to the requested zone change with concerns about safety, noise, increased density, increased traffic, and possible damage to brick streets during the construction. On April 1st, the district, the DAB meeting, considered, DAB considered this item and had no recommendation, they had a tied vote, three to three. Several members of the public spoke in opposition with many of the same concerns as had been voiced at the Planning Commission meeting. One protest petition was received against the case, and it was located outside the protest area, so therefore, the protest did not exceed the 20% threshold. In terms of recommendation, it is recommended the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. That will require a simple majority of four of seven votes. In terms of alternatives, you can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and deny the requested zone change. That would require five of seven votes, or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, which would require a simple majority. In terms of process, just a quick note, the city council policy is that the public hearing for planning items occurs at the Planning Commission meeting. According to that policy, city council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the images and photos. So here's the site, identified in red, here's the zoning for the areas was described. Says from the comp plan, showing new residential is recommended in the area. Here's a photo of the site, which is currently vacant. There's an apartment building to the south, which is owned by the same owner. Says looking to the north, looking to the south, across the street. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. We will not open.
No, because this is a planning item, sorry. We'll stay at the bench. This resides in Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. At the District Advisory Board, we had four members who were not sworn in at that time, and I would like to know an actual position from the District Advisory Board, so I would like to defer this item until Tuesday, May 14th, and send it back to the District Advisory Board, which will be meeting Monday, May 13th.
Motion in a second, any further comments? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Tuttle to attend the Community Leaders of America Conference in Colorado Springs, Colorado, May 15th through 17th.
Any questions of Councilmember Tuttle?
And I'm sorry, I'm trying to push requests to speak and it won't work, so I apologize for that, but I just wanted to make the comment that I've been invited to attend the Community Leaders of America as their guest, and there will be no expense to the city of Wichita. Thank you.
A motion to approve that travel?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Oh. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start with appointments, any, sorry, the system's not working. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Jack Silver to the Affordable Housing Review Board, and Kurt Oswalt to the Library Board.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to appoint Andre Mble, Jr., to the Cultural Funding Committee, Emily Taylor to the Historical Preservation Board, and reappoint John Williams-Bay to MAPC and BZA.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I would like to appoint Alicia Sanchez to the Airport Advisory Board. Thank you.
No further board appointments? I move to approve the board appointments.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. It is now time for Councilmember Comments, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Today during public agenda, I did not extend public comment as I have done for the past five meetings, but I would like to direct staff to draft an ordinance that would codify that, so it doesn't have to be done every single meeting, to extend public comment to a period of 30 minutes, if we have open spots. So let's say there's five people, they're only speak two minutes, there's still open spots, so public comment to extending a period of 30 minutes with a time limit of five minutes per person. So if someone shows up and they don't have prepared remarks, they want to give remarks, I think they should be given the opportunity to do so. So instead of making a motion every single meeting, I would like to codify that into an ordinance.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just invite everyone to come out on Friday to the new Fitness Court Park at 25th and Wellington Place. We're doing ribbon cutting on Friday at 1:00 PM, and it is so cool. If you haven't seen it, you need to come check it out. If you can't make it Friday, highly recommend stopping by.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to invite everybody out this Saturday at Lincoln Park, we are going to have the Second Annual Neighbor Fest, from nine o'clock to 11 o'clock, free pancakes, breakfast. You know how we do it down in the third district, always have the best food. And then also tours of the firefighter museum that's out there too, so please come on down, it's going to be a good gathering with some of the locals, and always a good time to, to meet with people, it's at nine o'clock to 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think District 3 gets the food good, because it's the folks from District 1 that come down and cook. I just wanted to shout out everybody that participated in the Prairie Fire Marathon. My colleagues peer pressured me into, to running, and I actually made it and lived through it, so I'm happy about that. But it was a good experience, love to see everybody out there having a good time. I did get passed by 266 people, so I am definitely out of shape.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Sorry, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that came out to Open Streets Nomar. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but speaking from social media, it looked like everybody had an incredible time, so I appreciate staff and all of our partners that made it happen.
No further comments? I will just remind folks to please mark it on your calendars, Sunday, October 13th is the next Open Streets ICT in, on Douglas Street, as well as the Prairie Fire Marathon. So October 13th is the next opportunity, and again, thank you for everyone, including Councilmember Glasscock, who did the half marathon, and Councilmember Johnson and I, who did the 5K along with Norma from our office. So really would appreciate if people would either participate or come and cheer your community members who are part of the running community. Thank you again. I will move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments? I see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six one. Councilmember Johnson would like to stay behind. Thank you.